All right, good afternoon, everybody. It's June 16th, 2025 is now 6:00 PM or shortly after. We're going to call this meeting to order. Let's go ahead and start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have Naomi Berkland, Stephanie Lanster, and Rachel Dwyer present tonight and the mayor. We do have quorum. Has everybody had a chance to review the regular agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Is there any questions, comments, or removals from the regular agenda?
No.
Brenton, are you good?
Yeah, one, we could put it under consent if you're good with that. Would be a special event permit.
Okay, so we have a special event permit that we'll be adding to the consent agenda.
So we'll do that in the next item if you prefer to be on the consent.
Good on consent.
Okay.
That was in the email, right?
Yeah, that was planned, but just confirm if you want to do that, the regular agenda.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve of the regular agenda for this evening. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Item number four is the consent agenda, has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda for this evening? Is there any questions, comments, or removals from the consent agenda?
No.
Nope.
I'll look for a motion.
You have the addition.
And with the addition, I'm sorry, of the last item that Brenton added for a special event. You'll make that motion, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay, I have Rachel Dwyer with the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, number five, the approval of the city council meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from 2025, June 2nd?
Yes.
Any comments, questions?
No.
I'll look for a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six is public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment on something that is not currently on this agenda? When I have time, go ahead and take the podium and please state your name and address, please.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Sean Carlson, 8844 Northern Lights Avenue, Horace. So I was here the last meeting, and I respect the council's time, I just have some more questions. As you guys know and are aware of, they're working on that pond in Lost River, and the project is underway. I talked to the contractor, it was probably two or three weeks ago, three, two, three, over three weeks ago, and we were inquiring about the weed removal that's part of that project. And I was told, and another, my neighbor was told the same thing from a different party, that nothing was going to be done about the cattail removal. And I asked the question last meeting, and you said nothing, I was told that no conclusion or no plan was in place yet for the weed removal. So just inquiring if there's any more action or if there's any more insight on that. I have some other questions as well regarding that.
So no action on it at this time? We've been working on getting the subgrade to drain and getting the, oh, that's on. Number one, the soil was very wet out there, so they had to spend quite a bit of time farming that. So they've been concentrating their efforts on that to get the compaction right on the slope for stability. And then we were working on getting the gravel underneath the sidewalk to drain, because, so it doesn't just pool up underneath there. So those have been the big things that we've been dealing with. And then we'll get to the cattails part of it. But with the rain and the forecast and all that, they wanted to get the slope back together and start the sidewalk portion.
Right, and that's reasonable and really to be expected. It's part of, it's the major crux of the program, of the plan. The contractor just stated with me that they weren't going to do anything. Like, it's like, he said "they," and I took that to imply that that was the city decided that, like, so all I know is what I know. I just see clarity.
Exactly, and they haven't been directed to do nothing with it yet.
Okay, because that's the way he's telling us.
Anything from the city, we talked about different options, whatever, but then the drainage and their stuff.
Yep, and that makes sense.
Took over for it, so it hasn't been forgotten about, and it hasn't been told that I'm aware of to not do anything with it.
Okay, okay, and I appreciate that. Because it is part of the plan, the approved and budgeted plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so.
And so Jim, then you'll be talking with the contractor at the appropriate time?
Yes.
To do that remedy?
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm sorry, I do want to make just one comment. I want to make sure that we, while I understand your concern with the weeds, you know, when we decided to go forward with the project itself, I know we had a lot of residents that were talking about the weeds and how much they were kind of an eyesore. But at that time, I do recall that we had talked a little bit about the functionality of the pond versus aesthetics. Of course, I think we'll try to do everything we can, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be probably 100% perfect. Because we're, as a city, we're focused more on the functionality of the pond versus what it will, if that makes sense.
That totally, that makes total sense, and it is confusing as a citizen.
Yeah.
Where, I mean, I get it, because verbiage, we called it a pond. When the development was first being built, there was fountains in it, they were lighted.
Yep.
And there was no weeds, and there was houses built around it. And I'm guessing our taxes are more for a similar property that's not on the pond? I'm not, I don't know that, that's academic, I'll find that out. But it was like, it was kind of the centerpiece, the crown jewel of that development. And it's confusing to me as a citizen that the city or whoever built that, you know, in our backyard, there's a sidewalk, it's lighted, it's irrigated. It hasn't been mowed, I think it was mowed once last year, it hasn't been mowed at all this year. The weeds are not high, and it looks like heck dressing it up. So I get it, and really, as a resident, I don't care what you call it, what it's called. It's just, I just wish the city would take better care of it.
Right.
To not make it look like an eyesore, a lot of traffic around it. And it's like, you have this, where there was a problem with the slope, we're fixing it. And, you know, I think it's unreasonable to seek and expect perfection, yet just make it so it's, we're at least trying anyway. And it's not embarrassing.
And I think there, Jim, remind me, I feel like at that time, there was a little bit of confusion as well as what the HOA takes care of versus the city. Do we know?
That was my note was to look into.
I think it's sidewalk up, is HOA and sidewalk down a city or something?
That's my belief.
That's what I remember, too.
So, I mean, if.
From the sidewalk down.
Okay, so.
Yeah. The HOA mowed the top.
I mean, if it is our responsibility to take care of that, you guys, I mean, Jay sends out code enforcement letters, and he's got a stack of 200 of them. I think we need to make sure that we're taking care of the items that we need to be taking care of. So if we could.
I'll relay that to Public Works.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I think our goal, I think our goal is, not just with that pond, but within the other ponds, too, is we do intend to get back to the fountains.
Good.
Whether the submersible, I know, Jim, we've had a couple different discussions of different types of fountains.
Yeah.
That works best with the filtration issues that are sometimes had with the pond. But this pond's going to be a little deeper now, and we might get away from some of the sediment issues that we were having with, my understanding was with the fountain. So we do eventually intend to get back to that, not just there, but with the other ponds, too.
Yeah, those other ones they were using.
And, you know, make sure that we have clear.
I don't know if it is going to be deeper, is it going to be deeper?
No, we need the soil to keep the bank from sloping off, so.
Right, it's going to be.
That's right, and so.
This one didn't get deeper, but as we plan ponds going forward, they are deeper on purpose for water quality.
I misspoke, it was a discussion of the different types of pumps that are best had in the ponds, so.
Right.
Yeah, we do intend to get back.
And we did see a difference when the fountains were running. I mean, it does curtail the cattail problem encroaching. And there was one time where without fountains, the cattails grew up, then it, we got green scum, bugs go up, and it's just, and it's just ugly. And pretty, and like now, you look down from north to south, and you can't see, like, in the little venturi, the narrowest part, it's solid cattails. I mean, it's so, it's out of control, it needs to be helped, and it sounds like you are, and I really appreciate it. I value your time, I don't want to come up here like some wacko, like complaining, and, because I get it, but I just want to be a squeaky wheel and just make sure that it's, we can make our crown jewel shiny again.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
I appreciate it, too.
All right, thank you very much.
And I wish it was going faster, you know? I wish it would have been earlier and gone faster, but this is.
It is what it is, and here we are, but at least there's progress, and we're all happy. It's like, okay, here we go, and let's just try to do it right, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there was a lot of hands earlier, who else has a comment? Go ahead and take the podium, please, state your name and address, please.
Hello, council, my name's John Manus, I live at 6,478th Avenue South. Again, I'm here to squeak as well a little bit. Naomi, thank you for answering my email this week. I'm coming up to talk about, to express concern or lack of enforcement, I guess, on city ordinance number 13-604 for parking. On, you all got the email, city council got the email, but I'll paraphrase it really quick. On Monday, the 9th, I got a written warning violation for parking my camper on the street like it has been for the last three years. The developer called in on me for a violation, and I was given that written warning by the sheriff's office. It was not legal, so I complied, I attached a vehicle to my camper, because one of the deputies had called and said his interpretation of the law for semi-trailers is that every trailer is now a semi-trailer, because it had a tongue and it couldn't support its own weight, so every trailer is a semi-trailer. That ordinance is written for semi-trailers to not be disconnected on any public street at any time. So over the next three days, I'd emailed all of you with a total, just in the three days, of 87 other violations that had, and I know you guys have better things to do, the sheriff's office has better things to do. But I was curious as to how many other people got that same violation as I did. So my ask for the city is that this ordinance is revisited or squashed completely. I don't think it's reasonable to have everybody put their own personal trailers on a vehicle on the city street. And if it isn't, it's going to stay that way, let's please enforce it for 100% of everybody. I know it's unreasonable, I think, for all finished concrete to have their trailers connected to vehicles, just as it's unreasonable for anybody else to have their lawn tractor connected to a vehicle on the city street. But I was given a ticket, a warning for it, with a threat of towing within three days or a fine of $20, I think, something like that. Yeah, like, if that's the law where the city's going to uphold the ordinance, then I support it 100%, but let's please enforce it for everybody. If it's not, and we don't have the resources to enforce it, and it's silly in the first place, in my opinion, then what can we do to change it? And I guess a question for that, would the city be willing to define a semi-trailer under that North Dakota law?
Okay. Thank you for showing up tonight, we do appreciate it. Just so you realize and everybody else realizes, anytime any resident sends an email and blasts the entire city council, we will pick one person to reply back, so you don't get separate answers from every single person. We do actually decide amongst each other, you know, just saying, hey, I'll take this one. That was Naomi this time, she took this one, she talked about it with me, that said she was going to reply back. We do plan on talking about our parking, and no parking in the city again. That is, at some point, going to come back up on an agenda. To your point, yes, you received a written warning, nothing more than that. Reasons why, I guess I have not talked to Officer Noonan or Deputy Noonan to find out exactly his details. I talked to the sheriff's department earlier last week to at least get part of the story, so I understand. But the long and the short of it is, something had to have occurred for Noonan to go over there and issue a written warning. I'm not sure how it was located on your property or the street, like I said, I have not talked to him, to be honest.
Fair.
But a warning was given. And, yes, we have a lot of properties that are also parking campers and trailers and everything on the street, kind of like you, it's more of a problem in the winter time for our operations guys to plow snow. But it will be coming up on an agenda. We have to figure that out as a group, when to put it on there, because it's going to be probably a more heated topic. It'll probably have a lot more people in the audience to voice their opinions. But it will be coming up, as far as, do I have a rhyme or reason why you got one? No, I don't, but we can try to figure that out for you. But I appreciate you coming here.
I can help you answer that portion, if you're interested, if the council's interested. My camper that day happened to be parked in front of one of the homes that was breaking ground on Cub Creek Way.
Okay.
It wasn't the way, so Don Dabbert called it in for a violation to have it moved. He hasn't liked the camper there for quite some time, and that's okay. But on this particular week, then it became illegal after Deputy Noonan further revised his description of the semi-trailer law. So that's what got me kind of curious as to what this ordinance states, and if I'm going to get the ticket, why can't everybody else?
So, to help answer that.
Or the warning.
We don't have a police force as of yet. We rely on the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department has indicated that it would take a lot for them to try to enforce parking in the city of Horace, just because they don't have the staff level that a Fargo has. We have one deputy for every 2,500 people right now, or more. Fargo is one deputy for every 800 to 900 people. They have a lot more enforcement, they even have parking enforcement. So for the city of Horace to try to enforce all of that, it'll be tough.
It's ridiculous, right?
Especially a three-day parking ban. But we're working on it when we do finally have a police department, you know, and we don't foresee that anytime immediately soon. So it's there to try to curb. We had a boat, not even pontoon, a boat with the tongue cut off the trailer last year or the year before, with all kinds of used tires in it, over here in Southdale. It's for stuff like that, trying to get rid of the nuisance stuff, especially during the winter time, for our operations people. So I hope you weren't offended by a warning, but.
No, not by the warning, for sure, but it sure seemed that I was the only one within the last few days that's gotten that same warning. And the very next morning, there were two other trailers right next to mine, not connected to a vehicle, not a word was spoken. So I'm kind of asking, I know, great to be tabled, I'm happy to participate in the discussions, but until that time, I know you guys can't ask the sheriff's office to stop. I will ask for maybe enforcement on that to stop for now, so that I can park like everyone else does.
Understood. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
All right, there was other hands raised, go ahead and take the podium, name and address, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Benita Vick Olgren, and my address is 7814 Sunset Drive, Horace, obviously. And thanks just for the opportunity to use the public comment item on the agenda. I'd emailed the council and a couple of city employees at the end of May. And that presentation that I emailed is available. I also made copies for the council in case you'd like to refresh your memory of that, and it's regarding fireworks. Thank you. I'd also like to say thanks, Naomi, for responding to my email. Now I understand that you drew the short straw for that.
No, not a short straw. It's not a short straw.
So anyway, have a lot of material in there, a lot of research on this topic. I'm just going to try to briefly cover the main points there. So our 2024 Horace permitted fireworks days are 10 continuous days around the 4th. And just for a visual representation, it's a lot of days, and it's equivalent to one-third of a calendar month. In contrast, there is significant variation in local fireworks laws. So in North Dakota, if we just look at our state, Fargo and Bismarck prohibit the use of fireworks, as does Grand Forks, although they allow small things like party poppers and snappers, that kind of thing. Also not permitted in the state of Minnesota. In West Fargo, oh, thank you. In West Fargo, they can be used pretty much all day on the 4th. So fireworks produces noise pollution, and that can create significant disturbances for our residents in Horace. So some of those are just stress and anxiety of the noise, lack of sleep. Our pets often experience fear and anxiety, that impacts their well-being. And it also has the potential to disrupt local wildlife. They tend to, when there's unknown noise, they don't know what the origin is, the bright lights, they can flee, alters their natural behaviors. So I just want to delve into those things just in a tiny bit more detail. So I think there's a few groups of people and things that have the most impact from this. So I want to speak specifically about veterans. So the National Center for PTSD said veterans likely have more anxiety than our general population. There are 66,000 registered veterans in North Dakota, and there's 15,000 in Cass County, so that's a sizable population of veterans. For people that have autism, especially children with autism, many times, about 90% of that population has auditory hypersensitivity. So very loud noises really impacts that group negatively. And then just the general population can also suffer from some noise sensitivity. Lesser degree, obviously, but can definitely impact just regular people. For pets, one study showed that over 67% of dogs suffer from at least one form of noise aversion. So that, again, that unpredictability of the noise, the bright lights, is, can be terrifying for pets. And then besides, you know, people and animals, we have some other potential issues. Fires, in 2022, 31,000 fireworks-related fires in the US, including six deaths, 44 injuries. For injuries alone, about 10,000 emergency room visits that same year. And then in the appendix, there is some additional local data that was provided from Southern Valley and Rescue. And then we just have the garbage that's left over after our celebrations. So what I'm proposing is that our city of Horace match the city of West Fargo. That ordinance essentially limits fireworks to July 4th, December 31st, and then special events like our Horace Bean Days. If we reduce, not eliminate, but we would have lower noise levels, we'd have a calmer, a more peaceful living environment. I think my biggest point here is that when we had this very expansive ordinance in the past, Horace was much different, we were very rural, the homes were more isolated than they are. We are now more urban, we're more compact, our population is really increasing. And I think that's evident, every city council meeting that I look at has something to do with our very large growth. City council planning and zoning, same thing. So this is really a call to action for our council, because you have the ability to help with these things. Reduce that noise pollution, reduce that resultant stress and anxiety that that noise produces. It's going to improve our community safety, too. And then we can, as residents, continue to celebrate our July 4th, our New Year's Eve, and our special events. So I'm just asking, what action are you willing to take?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe there's still more hands raised earlier. Does anybody else have anything to talk about for public comment that is not currently on the agenda? Go ahead, please take the podium and state your name and address.
All right, I'm Lindsay Peeper, and I live at 505 Fifth Street East in Horace. And I'm not really good at public speaking, so I have a little notes for myself.
I'm sorry, what was, can you repeat your name?
Yeah, Lindsay Peeper. Do you need my address again? I got it. You good? I don't know if I'm a squeaky wheel, too, because this is my second meeting I've ever been to, so. So I live in Horace, across the street from a public and open park space. And last week, on a walk with my three-year-old and my eight-month-old, I noticed the placards that said that they were spraying. And I also noticed that Independence Park, too. And then again, across the street from my house, for weeds, to stay off the grass until dry. This alarmed me, because I have never seen them spraying in our open spaces before, where my kids and pets spend a lot outdoor time. I guess I'd like to request the city and/or parks to stop spraying these public places, where our most vulnerable and sensitive population spends their time at. According to Moms Across America, which is an organization whose mission it is to spread awareness of healthy communities, spraying is linked to numerous negative health effects in children, as well as adults and pets. I have some handouts, if anyone wants them, that has some science and facts. I have never seen them spraying before, I'm going on my seventh summer here. And when I contacted the city, I talked to Joel, he then sent me to, I called someone at the parks, can't recall his name. He was very kind, he did say that it's just the way that everywhere else is adopting, and that Horace will too, unless someone shows up to city council at public comment. So here I am. According to Moms Across America, it seems there are other healthier, safer ways for weed control, just in our parks. I think it's a little different than yours, maybe. And I'd be happy to look into some of them for an alternate solution. And although I am not an expert on yards, for what it's worth, I haven't really ever noticed anything crazy, at least by our house, to warrant the spraying, I guess. In conclusion, I just don't think we need to be spraying poison fertilizer, the place where the most sensitive members of our community play. And again, I'm no expert, but I am a mom, and I am super passionate about keeping my children safe and healthy, and I hope that the city of Horace would consider this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and just getting back, is there anybody else that had raised their hand earlier? I think I've gone through the complete count that I had in my head, but if anybody else has anything else to comment on that is not currently on the agenda, go ahead and please raise your hand. And then one last time, is there anything else that anybody wants to comment on that is not currently on our agenda before we close public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. All right, and we have item number seven now, the sheriff's update. I do believe we have a deputy present?
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you.
And good evening, and since this is my first time actually trying, meeting you, I'd like to get your name and a little bit about you.
So, my name's Nick Huss, I've just been living here for approximately a little over a year now, originally from Ohio. Moved to California, I did four years in the Marines, and then I'm here in the great state of North Dakota. Been with sheriff's office for approximately seven months now, and been working down here full-time for approximately three months. So basically, that's a little short form of who I am, where I come from. Basically, for calls for service for the sheriff's office, in total for last month, we had a total of 593 calls down here, which majority of our calls were basically our community-oriented policing, which is just showing enforcement laws down here. Obviously, one of our major calls that we had last month was, obviously, what you guys saw, the water rescue. Basically, a kid just left his bike around. What we're asking from the public is, talk to your kids, basically, if they are hanging out, fishing with their bikes, make sure they are taking the bikes or fishing poles away, so people are not thinking they fell into the water. Obviously, we had the best situation outcome, and the kid was okay. The majority of our calls were civil paperwork, so basically, people with debt, we have to get in contact with them, get in contact with collections and stuff like that. And then we do a lot of what we call building checks, is making sure our buildings, our residents are secure, which basically, we did a total of 91, that's doing our buildings and doors of the city of Horace. We do check a lot of residents, obviously, we had that burglary down off Industrial Drive the other month, so we are, I wouldn't say enforcing it more, but making sure we don't have that situation again happen in the near future. Obviously, what we're asking from the public is, doesn't matter how big or small you guys see, if you guys see something out of the ordinary, make sure you contact the sheriff's office, and we have no issue coming out and talking to whoever the vehicle is outside your house that you've not seen before, or someone that's just walking around at strange times of night. Doesn't matter how small it is, we have no complaints coming out and making sure that the citizens of Horace are safe and the residents are secure at all times. the citizens of Horace are safe and the residents are secure at all times.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So the very, the most red area on that heat map
Yep.
seems to be Casey's. Is that just, am I looking at that correctly? Is that because, I don't know, curious why the heat map is so lit up at Casey's?
Is that Casey's?
Is that Casey's? I think so.
That, that looks like Casey's.
Or maybe it's not.
That's gonna be on the, that's gonna be east side of the road, so it's gonna be close to Casey's.
Or would it be up, is it closer to headquarters or something? I'm not.
It looks like, obviously with a map, it kind of looks like it's in the general area of headquarters. Casey's are all together. This is the first time I've seen this map, so I don't really know what the, I don't know what the red means. Sorry, I can try to give you a better answer for that.
I was just curious if there was something chronically happening at one place, but.
Based off my experience, so I'm strictly nights, and what I do is, most of my times that while I'm working nights, I have probably responded to a call at Casey's headquarters, I think, one time, since being, being down here for the last three months. Obviously, it was nothing severe where the public should be worried at this time. But with this map, this is the first time I've seen, like I said, I can try to get you a better answer for that.
I, I'm, I'm okay, you don't have to do any follow-up. I'm assuming also that, I think they chart time that they also just are checking in, popping in, kind of sitting, maybe keeping an eye on things, if that's a common place for that to happen, maybe that's also.
Yeah. It, it could be.
Saying that those spaces are safe is fine.
Yep, I, I have, I haven't seen anything bad happen to those areas. One thing that the sheriff's office know is, we are taking, we receive some tips in the, in the past about Wall Avenue and speed. I just wanted to let you guys know that the sheriff's office has, one, seen the tip, and two, have been taking action on it. Because we, when I'm driving down, I see multiple kids walking on the sidewalk with their family, and from experience, I know a lot of people do speed on that road, so I want you guys to know that sheriff's office is taking action to your guys' concerns at this time.
We do appreciate that, and if you need me, the mayor, to give you guys a little backing with your leadership, to say, we appreciate what you're doing and to let you do your job, I will be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
And just for clarification, on, on the report, it had, the May was five hundred eighty-nine calls for service?
Okay.
Is that, is that what's broken down underneath it?
Uh, yeah, so.
I mean, just for clarification, it didn't look like it equaled five eighty-nine?
So what I had for my area was five ninety-three. I don't know, so this is my first meeting with you guys, so I don't know how it works from showing you guys where our calls for service are, and then through us. I'm still learning the area, especially city ordinances, and I've been talking to Deputy Keller, and then Deputy Nuneau, obviously, to learn the area. So I'm still learning about this, so I'll try to see of how that works.
It's totally fine, I just was wondering.
Your count there probably is closer to two thirty, two forty-ish, right in there.
Yeah, so.
Just, it was just an observation.
Okay.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Any questions?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item, item number eight, we have the, oop, that was eight, I'm sorry. Item number nine, Southern Valley Fire and Rescue, for your update?
Are we not, I think we sort of.
Oh, that was, okay, my, I'm sorry, we do have something for number eight for Cass County Sheriff's Office. Consideration for another deputy, Brent, you have this one?
Yeah, we tried to keep the sheriff's office conversation in line, or back-to-back here, so. What you have here is asking, your staff asking for consideration from the council of adding a fourth deputy. So within our twenty-twenty-five budget, we, the city of Horace budgeted for three deputies. Cass County Sheriff's Office budgeted for four. When we budgeted for three, it was getting to twenty-twenty-five, and then if the council decided about halfway through the year, if we wanted to add another one, we could. We do have flexibility within this year's budget to do so. For next year, one of the concerns, at least that I have from the staff side, is that with the new property tax bill and majority, majority of the county's budget coming from property tax dollars, could that impact us in the future, if that position wasn't filled? In addition, we talked about just a little bit ago about coverage ratios. In my memo here, it talks about, based on our population study that we had A two S do for us, right now, we're around one deputy per twenty-seven hundred people. By the end of next year, we're looking at about one deputy for almost three thousand people. So it's really hard for our deputies, or the deputies that are assigned to Horace, to be able to keep up with all the different things going on when we don't have that coverage. So we're look, we're looking for council approval of if you would like to, or discussion and approval of if you would like to add another deputy or not. I do believe it would be better for the city, you have that fourth deputy. Going into next year, I think that would help us also retain, keeping a fourth deputy assigned to Horace. We caution with the county on the deputy position. The numbers I have included there for, for next year's budget, I just got those here the other week from the county. For next year, each deputy would cost us a hundred six thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. For four, that puts us at four hundred twenty-six dollars, I mean, or eight four dollars ninety-two cents. Like I said, I'm talking with Matt about this, too. I believe we both have comfort of financially being able to have them. It's a matter of if council would like to have that additional coverage or not, so.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yep.
You said in the memo, adding a fourth additional deputy in the twenty-twenty-six budget might be more difficult due to it not being filled in twenty-twenty-five. Can you speak to that, because I'm not quite understanding that? And, I mean, clearly, the, the funding has to still carry over, so you're, I guess I'm not understanding that.
I can take that one, Councilman Berkland. I believe what Brent is saying is if we don't have four deputies attached to Horace in twenty-five, we may not be able to get them to fund a fourth one next year.
Due to the property tax bill, is what you're saying?
Correct, due to the, the cost.
So if you, what, I'm, I just need to understand, so what you're saying is if we added it to twenty-twenty-five, you're able to increase the budget?
We're not talking about the city of Horace budget, we're talking about Cass County's budget.
Oh, okay.
If they don't have the deputy hired to service Horace in twenty-five, they may not hire one in twenty-six.
Okay, so my other, you know, we just had a deputy come up and kind of talk. Now, I know, I feel like the information with the total service calls compared to what was listed underneath for the calls is a little bit skewed, but I did hear the deputy say the majority of the calls are, I mean, we don't have a lot of crime in Horace, we don't have, I mean, every town or community has a little bit of riffraff every now and then. But the majority of what they're doing is really checking doors, being part of the community, showing their face around, you know, garnishments or whatever he mentioned. I, I just want to make sure we're being useful with the tax dollars. And my other concern, if I'm being frank with you, is we set a twenty-twenty-five budget, and I just don't know if it's right to, I mean, we have budget talks, we set a budget, and then we're just going to add on a hundred-some thousand dollars in what, in, in the cycle, when, when we should have thought, when we should have probably have just done it when we were having the budget talk for twenty-twenty-five. I guess it's a little disheartening, because I, I see your guys' point, and I see the, the, you know, the possibilities with this new law that North Dakota has, but I don't know how I can look at the residents and be like, yeah, it's my job to create a budget, and then just add on a hundred thousand dollars cost without, you know, taking that into consideration when we had the budget talks and we set the budget.
So it would be a prorated amount, so it would be, you know, if they hire one in August or September, it would be three, four, or five months of, of the pay. In addition, we're bringing this back to council, because council did say to talk about it partway through, through twenty-five. If you remember, the preliminary budget had four budgeted, and council brought it down to three, and said we can talk about a fourth one at some point within twenty-five. So we're bringing it back for discussion now.
Understood.
So, so it sounds like the primary concern is a potential budgetary issue on the county's end in their twenty-twenty-six budget. But I mean, what, what have we, what have we heard from the county? We don't, we don't know what the impacts for us are going to be in the county's budgeting cycle yet. Is that correct?
So we don't have the exact impacts of it. One thing they may be facing, it would be, they might be facing things like a hiring freeze, for example. So.
I'm sorry, what?
They might be facing like a, they might face like a hiring freeze or something, for example. And it's easier to do a cut, per se, saying, hey, we're going to freeze the hiring for a little while until we let revenues catch up. So that would be one of the first moves I would, I could see happening with the county, not saying, I don't want to put words in their mouth, per se. But that's also where I come from, if you have that position filled, a hiring freeze would less likely impact that. But like I was saying also, is your coverage is a big, you don't, the city does not have complete coverage. So by adding another deputy, does it help with our coverage? Yes, it does. Does it address our coverage even completely for a city? A city of almost eight thousand people, to have three deputies is very light on coverage, so.
Well, I mean, of course, safety is my top concern, I'm sure it's everyone's top concern. I guess I'd be curious, too, what Sheriff Johnner, have we talked about Sheriff Johnner, if he's got concerns for our community with our current staffing rate?
I, I can't answer for Sheriff Johnner. I know he's been here and he's talked about the coverage and staffing there, but, you know, I, I think he sees the point of why we have, having an additional deputy down here being beneficial, because if he didn't, I would assume if he didn't see it as beneficial, he wouldn't have had that accounted for in the county's budget for having a fourth deputy down here.
Well, that was a, because we had kind of.
Yeah.
We had asked. That was our, that was our.
We had doubled with adding.
But, but if he wasn't, or wasn't receptive to it.
Is the county current, the county's currently in our budgeting cycle, just as we are, right? I guess I kind of, of course, safety is my absolute top concern. If, if Sheriff Johnner said we absolutely need a fourth deputy, then, then, then yes. But I do kind of share Naomi's concern about the budgeting. We're, we're already in our budget cycle for twenty-twenty-six, we've already started our discussions on it. And we'll be finalizing that in like September or October. And I get, I get the comments about the concern about the county's budget, but I mean, it requires a budget amendment, and we're already close to our next budget. I wonder if we should just evaluate it in our next budget?
I have some similar questions. You know, kind of what spurred this, if it was just the population and our ratio, or if it is that the sheriff's department asks for help, or the legislation, it kind of sounds like it's a mixture?
It's, I would say it's a mixture. You have your, your deputy per population.
Yeah.
You have an increased request from, like, for example, the city, or, you know, say, being staff, council, anybody, saying, hey, can you keep an eye on this area, that area? We even had it earlier tonight, where it was conversation about no parking, but not having the adequate resources to be able to keep up with enforcement of that, for example, so.
Yeah, but Brent, and I don't think that, I don't think that four deputies are going to be focusing on, I mean, they're going to be.
They're not going to solve all.
Okay, so.
But they're.
You had mentioned earlier, Matt, that there, you knew some ratios off the top of your head, or maybe it was French, I can't remember which one you mentioned that during, earlier this meeting. And so what are other cities at for officers per person?
You want me to take this, or you to take this?
I, I was going to say, if you could recall off the top of your head, I know Sheriff Johnner did talk about that to council here.
Fargo, Fargo right now, Fargo and West Fargo are sitting roughly around nine hundred people per officer. I believe Grand Forks was around eleven hundred, if I remember that talk. Bismarck, once again, was closer to your thousand. Most of the bigger cities are right around that thousand mark per, per deputy or per officer. Horace is by far the, the biggest anomaly with the twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven hundred people per officer. And I think even, you look at some of the smaller towns that have a police force, they have a police force. We, we don't have that yet with the addition of House 1176. It's going to make it a lot tougher for us to figure that piece of the puzzle out.
Right.
To, I think what Brenton was trying to point out tonight is, Cass County right now, like any government entity, you, you spend your, your current budget, or you may not get that same current budget the following year. The problem with eleven seventy-six is it hinders any public entity from hiring additional staff. That's, that's the biggest hit for anybody, whether it's school, fire, city, county, you name it. That is where eleven seventy-six is going to hurt. And I, I understand his request, getting it on the books right now, so that if they do look across and just see what are easy items to chop off a budget for next year, obviously, if you're not letting somebody go, laying them off, firing them, whatever you want to call it, it's a lot easier, because it's not personal at that point. There's, there's no individual hurt. So it's all stuff to consider when we're trying to make this decision.
Okay, well, I do hear my colleagues concerned about the budget. I also am nervous, as you're speaking about it, about the new legislation, and we don't want to have. The ratios are also really concerning to me. I love the visibility that we currently have with the deputies that we have, and of course, safety is a concern. Even though we do have a rather peaceful city currently, according to the numbers, I, I am open to this fourth deputy position. Again, and it's mostly based on these ratios, that we're almost at three thousand people per deputy, per officer. But I'm, yeah, I'm.
So are, are you saying if, if we move forward, that, that we would receive a fourth officer yet for twenty-twenty-five?
If the council was to decide to move forward in twenty-twenty-five with a fourth deputy, the county would work towards filling that position. It wouldn't be immediate, they would, they would have to have somebody to put into the role. It's just that they would be accounting for that position to fill as they're filling other positions, too. And they would probably figure out, okay, does another, do they have another deputy on staff that wants to be dedicated to Horace? Or are they going to need to bring somebody on, or what do they do? So it's, it's not a guarantee you're going to have somebody here assigned to Horace right away. They're going to have to transition into it. They may have some, it might be a, for that fourth position, they might have a couple deputies kind of take over to help get some more hours to Horace. But you would have an assigned one after, once the sheriff's office can hire that.
The county then would have to amend their budget, too, for twenty-twenty-five.
My understanding is they have it budgeted already in their budget.
Oh, I thought that we.
We do not, we have three, they have four, account for Horace.
And work with them, for them to budget for the.
Is this something that might be worth a conversation, a conversation with Sheriff Johnner to see if they feel like an additional deputy would lighten the load, be a adequate addition to the Horace team, or?
That would be if council, if you would like me to invite Sheriff Johnner to come down, I could do that.
I think that would be a good conversation.
I don't know what's availability, but I could bring it up, I could text or call him, and ask him when he'd come down to touch base with council. He's normally pretty willing to come down and talk. We are going to probably come back at some point, probably in the not-too-distant future, talk about council decisions. probably in the not-too-distant future, talk about, uh, council decision on flock cameras. You know, he came and talked about flock cameras. The cameras are like license plates, make them out of vehicles. Uh, he was testing them out, I believe in Castleton, and he was going to want to come back and ask council if you guys want to participate, but he didn't want action from council when he presented it last time. It was more of a create awareness, say they're, they're looking into this. Uh, so question we're going to have for you coming up soon will be, do you want to participate in doing the flock cameras or not? Uh, I could ask him if he'd come talk about the additional deputy. Um, it, a- another thing to keep in mind is law enforcement isn't just about reacting to crime. It's also a deterrent to crime.
Yeah.
So if you're saying, hey, we don't have all these really high numbers, part of it is if you try to keep up with the growth of the community by having that additional position, it could help. I'm not going to say it's going to prevent everything of it, but it is, it does help deter.
Right, the visibility?
Yeah.
Not, I'm not, I'm not opposed, um, to this idea, but I do share, I would like to hear from, I maybe would like to hear from Sheriff John or on need uh, before we take the step of amending our budget for this year, when we're on the precipice of finalizing our twenty twenty-six budget going forward.
Would you like to table this item then?
I have one more question, please.
Go ahead.
Um, Brenton, you mentioned that the county already has it budgeted. Well, then what, why can't, like, what happens if they just keep it on their budget for twenty twenty-six? Why is twenty twenty-six such a? I, I'm, I'm not understanding that still. I'm sorry.
So if you're looking to make a cut and you look to see where did you have your expenses?
Okay, so you're talking they could cut it out of their budget is what you're saying.
Like, uh, Mayor Joe said, it's easier to cut if you haven't had, if you don't have somebody in a role, it's a lot easier cut than it is if you have somebody in a role. So you're, and we're, we're looking, why is the issue for next year is because eleven seventy-six kicks in for the budget?
I, I mean, I, this is just really difficult because I, I obviously think that we, you know, safety is a, a high priority for the community, but I, I mean, I'm tasked every year with creating a budget. And then I'm asked to go outside of that budget and I just don't know how the residents view that and I think it's kind of irresponsible and I, I just don't know how to remedy this because maybe the residents are like, yeah, we need another cop, do it, um, go for it, Naomi. But I, I'm having, I'm struggling with this big time. Because the, the most important thing, one of the most important things that we do as a council is set a budget. So, um, we have to keep that in mind too. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
I got a question for you. Um, you joined me at the, um, the senior center for a presentation and town hall meeting. What was the most common comment from the seniors at that meeting?
Sheriff coverage.
Speeding?
Speeding, uh, parking, uh, overall enforcement of city ordinances.
Thank you. Okay. Do you guys wish to table this item until I talk to Sheriff John or and ask him to come to a meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and table, uh, item number eight until I have a chance to have Sheriff John or show up at our meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to number nine, Southern Valley Fire and Rescue. Uh, Chris.
Hi.
Hi there. Thank you for coming.
This one's going to be a little bit lengthier than the usual presentation just because we got our ISO review back. So I figured I would share all that information with you. So for the time period for this one, we had twenty-six calls for service, sixteen of them being EMS. Uh, one of them was an extrication rescue. That would be someone who did not fit in a toddler swing at one of the parks and we had to get them out of it.
Oh.
They were a little too big for it.
Are they okay?
Oh, yeah, they were totally fine.
Was it a toddler?
It was not a toddler. Um, we did get the, we did get the, what we took off back to the park district. So they were happy about that.
Okay.
Um, motor vehicle accident. Uh, we actually had two callouts, two separate callouts for a search for person in water. Uh, the one the sheriff, uh, deputy talked about earlier. And then we actually had another one a couple of weeks ago, um, at a different pond where the same situation where there was a bike that was left and then nobody around. So, um, reiterate what he said of reminding people to not leave your stuff by these ponds. Um, because then we have to assume the worst and then everybody comes down and for a visit. Um, both amended up, uh, the best outcome where we ended up finding them. Um, we had an defective elevator, um, one of them that was dispatched and canceled route, uh, smoke detector and then a lightning strike. Um, which was great for the homeowner on that one. Uh, they lucked out because they weren't home when it happened and then they returned to notice some charring. So the lightning actually struck their house, but did not start a fire thankfully. So we were able to crawl around, make sure that there wasn't any, uh, residence of smoldering smoke or anything like that. So, uh, turnout times, um, pretty similar to last month's report, um, breakdown of our incidents. So eighteen of them were during the operations period and eight of them during the administration. Call times per day, that five o'clock timeframe was kind of the busiest with noon and nine o'clock falling at second. So we're up to a little bit more now, but a hundred and fifty-three calls for service, uh, sixty-eight percent of them were in the city limits of Horace. Um, so current projection, three forty-seven, so fifty-two calls more than last year. So we're definitely, uh, creeping up on that one a day average. Um, so some of our district updates that I, ISO review will go over in just a minute. Uh, one of the cool things that we did, uh, last week, um, we were able to make it official. We partnered with the Red Cross where, um, we can provide smoke detectors for residents, uh, at free of charge. We'll come and install them. Um, we actually have a link on our website. So people can go in and fill out a request form and then we can follow up with them to schedule a time. But, uh, it's a really awesome program that the Red Cross does. Uh, there's a few other departments in the state that do it and we've got thirty of them sitting at our station ready to go. Um, they're a ten-year battery in them. So it's a set it and leave it, which is super nice. Um, we've come across quite a bit of homes, um, of the, that are older that either have the same smoke detectors from the seventies that are inoperable or some of them that just don't have them in them. So now we can provide the free service and, and get smoke detectors in these residents.
Do you just give them to the resident to install or?
Nope, we come, we will come and install them.
Is it, is it one smoke detector per house or how does that work?
Nope. Well, we'll put them in the most, um, we can like three or four, like if they have a larger house, we can put them in there. It's more of, uh, feasible. Um, all they have to do is just sign a form that says we came and we installed it and then we just send it over to Red Cross and they send us replacements. So we always keep a, we always keep a pretty decent stock in the station, which is super, super nice.
Very nice.
Uh, so we're hoping to start getting that utilized here soon. And then it's even, we keep some of them in the trucks. That way if we do go on a call and they end up not having them, we can offer it right then and there.
How do, how will you get the word out about it?
Uh, so we're taking the social media stuff, uh, sending out blasts. Uh, it'll be in the horse happenings, uh, for the next edition. Um, so we're going to try to get it out as quick as possible.
Would you like us to put it on the city Facebook?
Yeah, yeah.
Paul? Nice. Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. So, uh, and then, uh, our fire academies, uh, coming to an end at the end of the month. Uh, I'm glad for that. It's a long, a lot of time and, uh, hours put in from the instructors and the students. Uh, but we're looking at twenty-four graduating from our academy. So we've been pretty consistent, no dropout rate. Uh, again, still one of the largest, uh, in the state. So it's been going pretty good. Everybody's passing all their tests. So we're pretty excited to see that complete. Um, and then we currently have, uh, volunteer openings. Um, the application period ends next Monday on the twenty-third. Um, so we're hoping to bring on a few more people.
So maybe, are you pushing that out on social media?
Yep, that one's being pushed out as well.
How do you become a volunteer? Like what credentialing do you need?
So we're looking for people that already have like fire one and two or EMS certifications, uh, one or the other. Um, we will train them up as well. Um, usually around the October, November timeframe. It's, we will look for anybody that doesn't have certifications because that's when we're gearing up, ready for our, uh, annual fire academy. Um, so preferably people with, with some sort of fire or EMS certification. Um, but we'll kind of see what applications we get rolling in. Any questions on those? All right. ISO time, the fun, dirty graphs that I like to make. Um, so ISO is broken up into four different or three categories. You have dispatch communications, fire, and then public works. Um, they actually have like a little bonus section for community risk reduction. So it's a scale of zero to a hundred and then with the total points being a hundred and five point five. Um, our previous rating was a five, five Y. Um, since the review in twenty seventeen, they kind of changed their grading criteria and try to make it less confusing. So, uh, our fire district now has two ratings. Um, the FPSA, uh, five, that's pretty much the same as, as the last rating. We, we didn't change, uh, categories. Um, the FDS is kind of their new perk to that. So instead of that five Y, it just kind of breaks it down even further. So the FPSA is five road miles from a firehouse, um, that's in a hydrated area. And then that FDS is again, those five road miles in non-hydrant area. And then that ten at the end is anything outside of five mile road range from any firehouse. It doesn't matter where. Uh, they're just automatically a ten, um, per the insurance rating. Um, so with communications, uh, total of ten points possible. Uh, we got to a nine from the dispatch side, which is nice. So they improved a little bit. They, uh, gained an extra point. Um, the graph, there's a little bit of a typo. I didn't catch that one, but the light blue, I believe, uh, is the, actually the FDS area. So for the city of Horace, we're going to be looking at the, uh, green. Um, that's what, that's what affects the city limits. Um, so for the fire district, we actually gained, um, eight point four two points from the last review. So we had a pretty significant jump. Uh, we got, uh, we came to thirty point seven nine total out of fifty, which is super awesome for all the staff. Uh, everybody worked hard to get to this. Um, we saw a bigger increase for credits for training and then, um, personnel, deployment analysis and the ladder service. That's a new one this year that we got points for. Um, and we even had points for reserve engine that we now have. So a lot of significant improvements, um, from our end. Um, water supply, um, this one dropped four point seven seven points from the twenty seventeen review. Um, talking with ISO and the grading, it's, uh, the demand increased and the gallons per minute flow requirement went up with all the construction and the buildings and everything. And the water pressures and everything aren't to what, what needs to be matched. Um, I believe there, when they pulled the random hydrants, um, for their testing, they out of all the ones in the city, they'll pull random five ones. Um, and then I believe the fire flow requirement was three thousand gallons and it was six fifty that they were getting. So, um, still, we're, we're middle of the road. We were one point two four points away from being an ISO four. So we're close. Um, now we have a roadmap of what we need to improve and work on for the next review. Uh, they're done every three to five years. Um, if you have significant improvements, then you can actually call, you can call them back sooner, but that's the average going is three to five years. Um, in there you'll look at, you'll see the divergence. Um, what that is, is because fire is graded out a total of fifty points, public works is graded out of forty. So that factor just kind of brings them to the same level, uh, same plane. Um, so that will fluctuate a little bit. Um, and then our community risk reduction, um, we have just shy of five points total. So that helped out quite a bit. So out of the total available points of one oh five point five, uh, we had fifty-eight point seven six. I know I just threw a lot at you, but does anybody have any questions on the numbers?
Very thorough report. I mean, is water supply one of them that you can't control much?
So you can with the infrastructure side. Um, I mean, it's, there's a lot that goes into it, but, um, where they see quite a bit of hits. Like if we look at the, that six-ten rating, um, we got hit pretty hard on the water supply side just because there isn't a lot of hydrants in the more rural areas. So, um, one of the things that did, um, benefit a lot of the community members in that range is you see that six-ten previously it was an eight-ten or a nine-ten. Um, one of the things that ISO added to, um, their criteria this year was, or for this cycle that we went through was, uh, what they called the hauled, hauled water rating. So with all the tenders that we have, we could prove that we could move X amount of water or gallons per minute. And so that actually, some of these residents might see a reduction in their, or potential reduction in their rates because they're actually going to be classified as a six now instead of that nine. So that's where we, we saw the biggest improvement. Um, but yeah, we were, we were so close to that four, we were so excited for that one, but.
I'm just curious too, when you talk about a potential improvement in insurance rates, how does that, how does that work? How would that work through the system if, uh, how was reclassified for the report? How does that get all the way to the end user insurance?
So the way, the way it kind of works is ISO kind of gives this classification and then each insurance company kind of pulls from it.
Okay.
And then they kind of set their own rates. Um, so the savings cost is going to be different per company. It's kind of more of, you just have to call them and let them know. Um, but like when they go to redo your policy, they'll pull this and they'll look at all this and, um, they'll see the data, like some of the maps. They can pinpoint your house and they can look at, um, the maps that they created. They'll tell you if you're within a thousand feet of a hydrant and the areas and the services, um, that are there.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris?
No, that was very informative. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, if you, uh, if you want to see the, the big document, it's about fifty pages that I have sitting in my binder. So it breaks it down even further. I just gave you the Cliff Notes of it.
No, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. Moving on to agenda item number ten, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-five dash six, Sparks Edition. Jim, you have this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, Lea Nancy Sparks, two thousand eighteen Living Trust has petitioned the city of Horace for public improvements to the Sparks Edition. Specialist Hesmond District consists of approximately a hundred and twenty-nine point four five parcel acres. Lea Nancy Sparks, two thousand eighteen Living Trust owns seventy-one point four two parcel acres, plus or minus, or fifty-five point one point seven percent of the parcel area. With petitioner owning fifty-five point one seven percent of the parcel area in the district, a resolution necessity might be required for this project. So what we have is a resolution declaring petition for improvements received, right, Lucas?
So basically what that means is the petitioner owns the majority of the land and you don't have to go through the resolution and necessity.
Okay. Further discussion from the council?
I have no questions.
I have none either.
Rachel?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll look for you guys either to motion to approve or deny.
All right. I'll make that motion to approve the resolution declaring petition for improvements, please.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I'm recusing myself from this one. I, I am. Yes. I was, I was trying, yeah.
I think we still pass.
Yes, still passes, but I am
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number eleven, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-five dash five, Luther Edition. Jimmy of this one as well?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this is actually Luther Avenue, not Luther Edition. But anyways, uh, this project is, uh, in conjunction with the Sparks Edition. This constructs the collector, the residential collector through that area of Horace. Um, being that there is no petition for this project, being that it is a regional improvement, it will have to go through the resolution necessity process, which is a publication period. At the last meeting, you approved the preliminary engineering report that has been distributed to the city on the website. And now the resolution of necessity process can start.
Correct.
They approved the engineers' report last meeting.
So if we want to, we can try to have that for the July seventh, maybe not.
It's too soon.
No, I think that's too soon. This thirty days after first publication. So I'll have to figure out the math, but once it's approved, we'll take care of the publication. Uh, that'll get published in the forum and then, uh, there's a thirty day comment period after the first publication. And then we'll have the public hearing after the comment period expires, whatever the first meeting is after that.
Okay. Further comments or questions for Jim?
I have none.
I'm not in further.
Rachel?
Nope, no questions.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll look for either a motion to approve it or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of necessity for district twenty twenty-five dash five.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, please.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on to number twelve, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-two dash twelve, River Moving on to number twelve, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-two dash twelve, Rivers Edge, second. We're talking about landscaping maintenance agreement and this is Lucas or Brenton, I think. Brenton?
I do have to take it.
Either way.
Go ahead, Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as you recall, we had the landscape operation and maintenance agreement for Rivers Edge second edition on your agenda. I'd venture to say now a couple of months ago. It has been tabled as the developer had requested changes to, to the agreement. We finally worked through those changes. He sent it to his attorney and then also the, the engineers for this project. So I worked with the developer, his representatives, and then Brent and city officials to go through and make changes to this agreement. And so I'll try to be brief to go through what's kind of just the, the high level changes to this agreement as not all of them are very substantive. So getting to page two, they just added in some additional infrastructure that qualifies as what was constructed for the project and then also what was included as part of, of the landscape amenities. And then just wanted to put in there that the parties will work together to ensure in good faith that the terms of this agreement are followed, I guess. The landscape amenities through this agreement are funded through the project, so through the development itself, specifically under the pond landscaping allowance and the irrigation allowance bid items. So Jim has presented those bid items to the council for approval previously. The council has had discussion on those and it's just evidencing those conversations within this agreement. Because keep in mind, this agreement will get recorded for future property owners just to make sure that they know that they are obligated under the terms of this agreement in terms of their HOA fees. Will go for payment of, of some of the items addressed in this agreement. The new section four just says that there will be a pond and landscape plan. What we want to do is just illustrate what landscape amenities are actually going to be incorporated within this or pursuant to this, this agreement. And so that'll be attached as an exhibit again for reference in the future so people can see what was approved previously by this council. There was a request to remove some responsibilities for the, for the city. So I'm assuming you guys are looking at the red line version. That, that might be a mistake. It's, it's easier if you're looking at.
Blue lined version?
Is yours blue? Mine's red.
Yes, but that's what we're looking, that's what I'm looking at.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, someone must have printed it blue. It's okay.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure what I'm saying makes sense to the council. So section three was, was removed. Section seven, just discussed what, what type of repairs will be included for around the, the pond bank. So we added water level fluctuation and other means of sloughing. So that was included. The biggest thing I would say with this agreement is payment for maintenance costs. And today we actually hammered down that maintenance costs for this agreement can be hammered down to mowing. So I intend on revising even this red line version to reduce the agreement to just say mowing costs. We wanted to be as simple as possible through this agreement. And so anywhere that there's reference for maintenance costs in red lines, just know that that's going to be changed to mowing and that I will likely revise the, the more in-depth section on maintenance costs to just say mowing. So that section, subsection eight there discusses that the city will pay for twenty-five percent of the maintenance costs for the landscape amenities on city-owned property. That'll be changed to just say that the city will be responsible for twenty-five percent of the mowing costs of city property. So the thought behind that is typically the city would have the full expense of mowing city property. Well, in this situation or under the terms of this agreement, the city will only be responsible for twenty-five percent of the invoice for mowing city-owned property. It's limited to city-owned property. I can't emphasize that enough. The developer will be responsible for the remaining seventy-five percent. Getting into the developers responsibility, responsibilities, they agree to hire contractors to work on the landscape amenities. They just wanted the agreement to limit it to the landscape amenities and not just be wide open. They requested that we remove the maintenance and replacement of native pollinator plots and ornamental plantings. I think the thought there was they'll just do the, the landscaping amenities such as the, the plantings at their own discretion and we don't need to put it specified in, specify that within this agreement as, as the plantings could change in the future. The design of the irrigation system will be included as exhibit B. The subsection nine under the developer responsibility, again, that gets into the seventy-five percent of the maintenance costs. That'll be switched to mowing cost. And I also emphasized that the, the developer or HOA is responsible for all other maintenance costs associated with the landscape amenities on property that's not owned by the city. Subsection ten just discusses mowing or hiring a contractor to mow grass within lot seventeen block nine of Rivers Edge second edition and the portion of the perimeter of the stormwater detention pond. Those, reference to those properties, that's the city-owned property. And then getting into section six, section six, the maintenance costs, again, I will revise that to just be mowing. And essentially what's going to happen is the developer will hire to get mowed. They'll get an invoice, they'll submit the invoice to the city. The city will then submit reimbursement for twenty-five percent of the cost to the developer. Developer pays the bill. If there's a dispute, they can appeal. First, the, the parties will designate representatives to try to hammer out any dispute of the invoice. If they can't hammer out the, the dispute, the developer has the opportunity to present his side to the council for resolution of the dispute. So that's just outlined in that section six. And then the rest of it is just requests from the attorney to essentially make the indemnification and stuff go both ways. I had it previously, so it's just the developer had to indemnify the city and so they just requested that, that be mutual. And same with damage caused by negligent or intentional acts of the respective party's employees. And then I think the last thing I have to do is, Brent, I'll defer to you on removing the reference to the casserole water connection. There's not going to be a connection?
Yeah, we can remove that is my understanding, checking with Jim and it sounds like it's not included as part of the project. So we can remove the reference of casserole water for irrigation.
Previously, under the city's obligation under subsection four, it was to obtain water service from casserole, but there is no connection, so that will be removed as well. And in short, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, those are the, the changes. The main one just being that cost share provision, which is going to apply to mowing of the city-owned lots.
Okay, and with that, is there any questions for Lucas?
We haven't had very long to look at it, but I think, I mean, I appreciate you walking us through it. I think it seems like a, I don't have any concerns.
I think my biggest concern, which is addressed in this agreement, is we wanted to make sure all parties were understanding on functionality versus aesthetic, aesthetics, am I saying it right? Aesthetic, yes, of mowing. And I, I think that this is a good, this is good to set this out so that residents understand that on a city side, we're not, we're not, we're not mowing a pond area for beautification so much as our priority is functionality. So I think this addresses, addresses it. So I don't have any other questions.
Naomi?
I'm good.
Okay, any other further questions? If not, I'll look for a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to approve the landscaping maintenance agreement. For Rivers Edge second edition.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, classified gravel for our, our roads. Brenton, you have this one?
Okay, for this, it's a, our staff, we went out, did a request for pricing, RFP. Normally you'll see RFP, say request for proposals, but for this, it was NDDOT classified gravel. Our staff reached out to eight different companies that could do graveling. Only one responded in the timeline that we asked for. That one for response was Earthwork Services. I identified them down in the memo here a little bit. My understanding is you may not have received the attached memo or you may or may not have received that one, but I can highlight it or I'll address it here. Basically, this is a re-graveling of all the gravel streets or roads within the city limits. It's putting down probably about an inch and a half, two inches of gravel on each of these roads. And some areas may have a little bit more. We haven't done one of these type of projects in Horace for quite a while, so that's why it's a little on the more significant side. What we're asking for overall is a budget of eighty hun, one hundred and eighty thousand from the city sales tax fund to complete this work. And they'll just go until they either got everything done or until we have exhausted that hundred eighty. This would probably be a project that contractor can tackle throughout the summer. We'd like them to knock out as much as they can, as quick as they can, but we also recognize they may have other projects going on too. So it's one of those that they can knock out one street, we have the road grader there, they can smooth it out and then repeat the next street. Overall, Earthwork Services, their bid came in for classified gravel at twenty-three dollars seventy-five cents per ton, delivered by end dump. Twenty-eight seventy-five per ton delivered by a quad dump. They address for loads of less than seventy percent full. It would be an additional higher twenty-five dollars delivery fee. We're talking a lot of gravel, not smaller trucks worth. So I believe they'll probably be filling up those trucks as well as they can. And I believe road restrictions are out of the way, so they should be able to fill the trucks up. If gas prices get up to higher than four dollars per gallon, they have a matrix based on the US government's energy information for how much per ton they would charge additional for gas, which it seems to be more, more common you'd see in the construction field there. Jim might be more familiar with it. I could break out that if you'd like me to, but basically for every twenty-five cents more per gallon, it looks like it starts adding about sixteen cents per ton. So for your price. You have questions?
Yep, I got some questions. Being a resident that lives on gravel roads, and I know some of the others here do as well. Do we have anything in there on timeline? I know you said that they could spread it out. My fear is, the last time Horace dropped a little bit of gravel on my road was right before the snow flew and it all got pushed into our ditch and then I got to remove it the next spring. So I am asking, what are we doing prior to all of the placement of all of this gravel? And what is the timeframe? I would like to see our road maintainer go through and try to knock out all of the washboard prior to putting all this down, which might take a little bit of work to dig down enough to remove the washboard and repack that road before we apply more gravel.
So that's, that's why we anticipate this project probably take throughout the summer.
Right, and that's where I'm asking, do they have a completion date well prior to this winter? So I don't have all this gravel in my ditch.
I don't, I don't believe we have a set in stone date, but we can express concern of making sure that they have that. Oh, gravel date, yeah. Yeah, we don't have a set gravel date, but my understanding was the project would be getting knocked out throughout the summer, maybe early fall, but it's mainly summer. And that we'd be coordinating with the contractor, so yes, we could blade the road. We did that on Wall Avenue where we put some gravel. Our staff went out before the gravel came, smoothed out the road, knocked out any washboards, smoothed out so then they could get the gravel put on there. So that would be expected of our staff and them. And do I think that they're going to be dumping all the gravel in just a few days? No, because part of it is just coordinating when we have our road grader out there and we get, when we can have staff be dedicated to doing that too.
Understood.
So, but we would want to be knocking out as much as we can, as soon as we can, so we can have the roads in better shape.
Other questions?
You, this isn't on the capital improvement plan right now currently, is it?
I believe we do have gravel in the future.
I see you talk about like the future CIP to maintain the roads. I'm just wondering, did we have that on the CIP for?
In, for future years, we have it as a smaller amount, more in that we have eighteen thousand dollars. But this is a overhauling basically to get all the streets up to par. So it wasn't called out as specific for that dollar amount that I mentioned earlier. We do have it listed as a line name in CIP for this year and every year therefore, but smaller amounts because we were not anticipating as much gravel to have to be put out. Like I said, this, the project basically gets up to, basically gets us up to par.
And can I just ask why we weren't doing this properly, like throughout the years, I guess?
I wish I had answered.
I mean, I know you guys have brought certain roads up at council, so I just assumed that this was something that was being done regularly. That's not the case though, huh?
We typically add gravel as needed. Yeah.
So it was a yearly or every other year for many years, but it was very intensive, often like six trucks or something like that just to make it, get seventy-sixth Avenue is a big one, sixty-fourth Avenue is another one. Occasionally, sometimes we have to dump stuff, but it wasn't the traffic.
Yeah.
And maybe as more roads get paved, it's maybe been less.
There has been a reduction, somewhat of a reduction in, in gravel, but I think a lot of it happened just as the traffic. There's, I think the study is like a, you can lose an inch per year.
Yeah, it's, it's listed in here, actually.
So, I mean, that's a pretty significant amount and I, for some reason, I just remember when Russar was still with the city, he had made the comment that he always drives slow because the dust you see is your road leaving. That was one thing that he had said, stuck in my mind for some reason, so. That's your road disappearing, so I think that's a lot to do with it. I think there are more people going east on Wall now that Forty-Fifth Street's paved, so Forty-Fifth Street, which isn't in the city.
Did we, did we get the road gravel off Wall Avenue east?
So there was gravel placed on that.
They did put some.
And that's when it was determined that a lot more was needed.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of the.
That was the catalyst for this project.
That was the, the eye test that, whoa.
But it, but it did get laid?
They, they actually put more than what we were originally planning. We actually had more trucks come to.
You could hardly tell.
Yeah.
That's why this is coming to you.
I believe we had two or three more trucks come or something. It was, it was more gravel than we originally estimated. They came, put it down, and then, yes, like Jim said, this was kind of the, this is the catalyst for, okay, yeah, we probably need a lot more gravel than what we were anticipating. So this project is a bigger project because of that.
I mean, I frankly would like to get to a point where it's a regular thing to keep up on it, so it's not such a heavy cost.
That's what we have in the CIP.
And then, I don't know what that looks like from a public work standpoint, but if we, if we put it on the CIP for future, does that mean it still has to come back to council? Then for a not, like another, yes, we checked the box, please do this?
We'd likely bring it to council or account for it within the budget, either one, so.
I'd like to put it in the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions?
Sales tax then? All right.
I grew up out here on gravel and I remember that when roads were finally gravelled, it was like Christmas in July. I mean, it's really nice and of course we want all the residents to feel like they're driving on nice roads and that their gravel is sufficient, not washed away or dusted away. And so I would fully support this. I think it's a great idea to just get them all taken care of and then have a, more of a routine plan moving forward.
I have no questions.
Okay, seeing no more questions, I'll look for a motion either way, yes or no, approving additional class five gravel for our roads.
How do you want the motion worded?
So what I'd recommend a motion would be to approve up to hundred eighty thousand dollars from sales tax for graveling of roads within the city limits of Horace and to award it to Earthwork Services since they are the lone bid within the timeframe at the time I provide you the memo here.
Quick question for you, based on dollar amount, do we need to have more than one bidder?
We went through a process of bidding. I believe the dollar amount is two hundred thousand? Yeah.
Okay.
Or two fifty, yeah.
Okay, just making sure we cover our bases.
Yes, you're covered.
Okay.
So you're saying we had how many, how many companies?
We submitted, or we reached out to eight different companies. One responded. At the time we identified the company to award, Earthwork Services, that was the one that submitted a response. Over the, I believe it was yesterday or today, I think it was actually today, our staff got another one. However, that was after we already noted who we recommended to award and the timeline when we were looking for bids. So that's why I did not account for that other one because we already identified who we would be going with for it if you were to award the project.
Understood, I'll look for a motion then.
I'll make the motion, um, with the verbiage that, uh, Brenton indicated.
Not to exceed a hundred eighty thousand dollars from the sales tax fund to Earthworks?
Yes.
Okay, I'll look for a second on the motion.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to number fourteen, annual liquor license renewals, uh, Brenton, you have this one?
Okay, next one here is annual liquor license renewals. It's a little, in the past, we had it more like a consent item, but, um, for this, I want to just touch base to each one as we had information trickling in, um, so I can just talk about each item here, uh, and each liquor license. Uh, we had Casey's already submitted their renewal request about a month and a half ago. Um, so we had four other renewals, reached out to each of the liquor license holders. And, uh, appreciate their cooperation to get them knocked out. I believe they appreciate having these, uh, taken care of also. Roundabout Liquors, uh, that's the new liquor store by Circle K. Uh, they submitted their payment for, uh, their liquor license renewal. Uh, we haven't had any concerns or issues at the staff side on that. So that one is submitted for, or they submitted the payment for that. Uh, we would just need council approval for that one. Uh, Big Erbs, from the city side, we haven't really had any issues on liquor license, uh, specifically. They submitted their, uh, payment for the liquor license and the server training list, which I appreciate we have that there. Uh, Fire, Southern Valley Fire has, uh, indicated they have issues regards to fire inspection for Big Erbs. However, like I said, asked for the actual liquor license itself and liquor issues. We haven't had any from the staff side. Um, so that would be up to council if you do want to account for anything there. Um, The Grove, we haven't had any issues there. They submitted their server training and their payment for liquor license renewal. And then Headquarters, same thing, they submitted their payment and liquor license renewal, so. Looking to see how council would like to proceed on these and if they would like to renew them all, what they would like to do. So, um, staff recommendation would probably be just for renewal of them if there are any issue or concerns, like the one Fire indicated. Uh, do you want to intertwine the liquor license with that or not? What is the council's direction on that?
So there's no precedent currently of intertwining liquor license renewals and fire compliance?
Our ordinance, I believe, doesn't really get into that within the renewal portion of a liquor license. If it's a new liquor license, it does. Uh, there's one little spot I saw where it could talk about safety. However, that is in regards to, it's ultimately a council decision what you want to do. Um, other cities may have that, but as I'm talking in regards to what I've seen in the ordinance itself for Horace. Um, and when I look at a liquor license, you know, renewals and everything, like I mentioned, I'm looking at, are we having issues with the liquor itself in regards to sale to minors? Uh, not abiding by their actual license they have there. Now, if there's a fire code ability issue, I, I've looked at it as keeping it separate from the liquor license itself, but that's up to council to decide if you want to have them included or not, or that included or addressed or not. So, because the ordinance does give you the ability to address that.
Okay, earlier today, I did reach out to, uh, Big Erbs. Um, we do have Joe here, he is the manager of Big Erbs right now. I do have Kelly here as well, um, that would be able to answer any questions as far as, uh, possible timeline for remediation for any of those findings. Um, if you guys wish to hear that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment too. So I, I looked into this too a little bit when Brent informed me that this was on the agenda tonight. And last year, the city council approved a, uh, a new chapter in its business, uh, business licenses generally. And under that section, the council can refer to reports of other inspectors in making its decision. I do agree with Brent that the council has discretion on, on how it chooses to handle the licensure, uh, in this situation in particular. And the council can, you know, take whatever action it, it deems appropriate for this. And part of it could be a conditional approval if need be, uh, in order to correct any, uh, violations that they have with the fire code. But the city can, the city council can rely on reports of other investigators per that, uh, new chapter that the, um, city council adopted last year, so in twenty twenty-four. There's also reference within, uh, um, liquor license chapter that does allow for the same type of, uh, consideration of the council, so.
Understood, thank you.
What is the direct consequence, um, of a violation of fire code? Like what is, what is the general, I mean, this, if we're keeping them separate, that seems logical to me, but what usually happens if somebody's non-compliant with fire code?
Lucas, do you know?
I don't represent the fire department, so I'm not sure typically, I don't even know what the, I mean, you've got the, the chief here to answer the questions, but I don't know what the violations are, I don't know how long they're going to take to remedy. I know that this license is supposed to expire June thirtieth. Uh, it is now June sixteenth. I don't know if the alleged violations can be taken care of in two weeks. Um, so I can't give you a definitive answer without knowing all of the information.
Kelly, go ahead and come on up.
Hi, Kelly Vista owner of Big Erbs, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So today was the first I've heard of this at about twelve forty-five. Um, no contact from the fire department to me personally. I guess they did reach out to Joe, my general manager, about issues, I think the inspection was last fall. So some questions I have, last year, we got in a headbutting match with Chris and Aaron about tearing down all the lights that we have in the bar. Okay, so we hired attorney just to check it out and they are holiday lights, have a four month, um, where you can have them up and use them. Don't have to take them down, but you can't have them lit for four months, or you can have them lit for four months out of the twelve of the year. So we elected to leave them up. We were notified, I guess, with this last inspection that they need to be taken down. Cannot even have them up. So the bathroom ones were on, we didn't know, they just said, take the ones down in the low area because you are now going to paint your wooden ceiling that's been there for I don't know how many inspections since I've owned it since twenty sixteen, where we have no issues of the ceiling being fire, a fire hazard. Their reasoning where if there's a fire to take off in there, people would not get out of there. The roof would kill people, not, not the vinyl flooring, anything like that. So I closed the business down for two days. Had a contractor hired to come do it last winter. Long story short, that got extended out. So last year, we looked bad, like we were not trying to, uh, complete the project. So I had, uh, um, Dan Beecher give me the product. It's some expensive paint that we sprayed on, it made the ceiling black. Um, closed for two days, which in numbers terms, costs you on a Sunday, Monday, about eight thousand to ten thousand dollars to close, three thousand dollars in paint, blah, blah, blah. Our hot water heater that is in our basement, which many of you haven't been down there, it's a dinosaur basement. I think the building's a nineteen forty building. The hot water heater is a tankless that has a extension cord running to it and has been that way since, uh, All Finish or All American Plumbing put it in in like twenty nineteen. So I questioned their inspection even on, well, it didn't pass last year. I was not notified of it. Joe did get the, uh, thing, I wasn't aware, I normally handle all construction changes. Um, so I don't know if it was miscommunication on our part, but, so I was notified at twelve thirty today that we are not going to get our liquor license and the fire department is up my again, which we've got our battles. Twelve forty-five, I called Power Connection Wade right over here, said, I guess I gotta get hot water heater hooked up. He said he'll get to it this week. Um, if I, guess would have known, I would have had it handled, but that's just where we're at right now, so. So I guess if the fire chief would like to see what else we have to do, then I'll be willing to fix it. But neither one called me, spoke to me at all, which I think if we're in non-compliance, they would just reach out. Kelly, maybe your GM ain't doing his job, not saying that's the problem either, or maybe there's miscommunication here, but I was not notified, so. Until today, so fifteen minutes later, the call was made and the work will be done, so. Anybody have any questions?
Quick question, um, I, I, I know about, uh, the hot water heater and some of the other items. Um, any other items on that list that require a contractor to come in to do anything? Or is it all just stuff you can manually take care of yourself?
I don't know. I just was called at five o'clock saying I better attend also, so I really don't know what's on the list. I trusted that my staff would either handle it if they couldn't get it done, so I'm not really sure. He had told me he had accomplished most tasks, so I don't know if you want to ask Joe, but I'm not sure.
And then, um, we will loop back, I guess, with the, the fire department just to make sure that everything has been, you know, addressed. But, um, I do appreciate you coming at least to, to answer this, I, we do appreciate that.
All right.
And, um, yeah, I don't, does anybody else have any further questions, I guess?
No, I don't.
No, Kelly, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, further discussion from the council?
I still don't know what usually happens if somebody's non-compliant with fire code, um.
All right, you have Chris coming up here, he could touch base.
Okay, so under fire code, um, and state century code, we do annual inspections on all commercial structures. With this one in particular, it was done last fall, October thirty-first. October thirty-first. Ten attempts were made for contact, uh, usually-
I'm so sorry, Chris, I-
So we reached out ten times, um, wanting follow-ups, um, to the management and, uh, Kelly's email. There was some discussion back and forth, but it was few and far between where they stated that they were updating some of it, but we were never invited back to actually do a follow-up. Um, a lot of the stuff that we pointed out, um, like the current one that we have right now, there's eighteen violations. Um, most of them, I believe, you probably, to answer Jeff, most of them you probably could do in-house. There was a couple, I think there's, there was some, uh, extinguishers. Um, there was one that was found that wasn't tagged, um, but the, the power underneath in the basement was the biggest one, the electrical cord, um, issues. Um, extension cord usage. The lights, yes, they're only temporary, um, but they can also be hung up twenty-four seven. They have to be down up, that's why it's underneath the Christmas lighting, um, or not Christmas, but the holiday lighting codes. Um, the inspection that's provided to everybody, um, lists all the violations plus the code that's associated with and pictures of it. So that way, there's no, there's reference points and you know exactly what we're looking at. Um, but yeah, the, usually, um, especially with the, with the changes around here, we've been giving a lot of leeway on timeframes. But usually it's thirty days mo- at max, uh, before fines and violations, um, for corrective actions. Uh, but with the changeover and the growth and everything, we've been pretty accommodating with giving some time, especially with the larger corrections, um, to a lot of the business owners, so that way they're not taking a huge hit. But yeah, that's, that's with this one.
So usually there's fines that you can impose or something?
We, we gauge it depending on how bad the violation is or the safety concerns or the risks. Um, if it's a severe enough one, we can temporarily shut down, um, through the courts.
Did they get fines?
Nope.
From you, no?
Nope. No, we usually save that as a very last resort. We try to work with everybody and try to educate first.
Okay, so, so we have Kelly here tonight saying he can, he's already hired a contractor here to address the electrical issue. And, um, like I said, I went through that list with you earlier this afternoon. Um, a lot of the stuff on there you could take care of, uh, or, or they could take care of themselves. Um, we're willing to work together here just to make sure-
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as it's done, we can go back in and take a look at it, we sign off on the fire report.
They, you, do people usually have to call you to invite you to back in to inspect again?
Yeah, we don't, we don't typically do surprise visits or wa- especially with lists. Um, we don't want to come back for one item at a time. It's get it done and then let us know, or keep us in the loop if there's a timeframe, or like, uh, one of the, um, correspondents was asking if the electrician had been called or what date they were planning on coming in, um, and they said they'd get back and then we haven't heard anything, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're usually pretty good to work with when it comes to this. As long as they get a timeframe and they keep in contact with us, we work with everybody. Um, a lot of the other business owners around here, they enjoy working with us. We usually have a pretty good education piece after we're done with an inspection, so we can explain to them why we're looking at what we're looking at and why it's a violation.
Okay, is that reasonable, guys?
Yeah, I don't know.
So if there's fines, why would you lobby for us to have our liquor license revoked and not find us first?
So this is-
I feel you heading onto me and I will be plainly honest, you have it for me.
No.
But why wouldn't you find me instead of telling the city council to not approve my, did you say that the city council did not approve my license?
Yes, well, it was a recommendation. No, it's a recommendation, so. So, uh, a lot of, uh, you know, since I started here almost two years ago, we've been, we've been asking to be a part of the process. A lot of the cities, um, for their annual liquor license, because every business gets an annual fire inspection, that's included with the liquor license. Um, it's, place I came from, on the other side of the state, we would knock out over a hundred and fifty, almost two hundred, uh, liquor license inspections in a month timeframe, because that's the date that they were getting ready to renew. But we did it early enough to where they had that thirty day window to get any corrections done before the liquor licenses came to the city council. But we've been asking to be a part of the process, so that's why when I saw this on, uh, agenda for today, I reached out with a recommendation, because I would like to work together and get that process going and actually, uh, be a part of that, but it helps hold everybody accountable.
Understood, and then I think you said the key words there, um, start to get that process going. Uh, we're not there yet, um, we, we haven't, um, uh, not renewed a liquor license at, to date, based on that yet. We're, we're still turning this big ship, so, uh, for right now, I, I understand your comment, I understand Kelly's comments. Um, hopefully we all can work together here and keep a business open here in town and, and move forward.
And then, Joe, are you planning on just contacting them when you have it, when you're ready for the inspection?
I did a follow-up in November, two weeks in, many of them were addressed on the eighteenth. And then there was another follow-up in April, where we pretty much narrowed down to just the water heater electrician needs to be fixed. So on the eighteenth, the majority of them have already been addressed and fixed in-house.
Okay.
In order to get our state liquor license.
Um, I just want to make sure that you guys, he won't just make an appointment with you, you have to make one with him, okay?
You can dial my phone, my email, I, I don't know who you sent it to, but, um, you can dial my phone or I know you about it.
Yeah.
Contact me before.
Okay. Are we good?
Yeah.
Are we good? Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. All right, um, with that, I'm still looking for a motion then for, uh, item number fourteen for the annual liquor, liquor license renewals.
So we did separate them out. If you want to do them separate, you can, or if you want to take action as them holistically, you can, either one, whatever you'd prefer.
Okay, um, I'll just make a motion to approve all of A through D, uh, liquor license, please.
Okay, I have a motion.
And then just with the caveat that the Big Erbs will contact the, um, when they, when they have- And then, just with the caveat that the Big Erbs will contact the, um, when they, when they have it, when they're ready.
Okay, I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, moving on to number fifteen, the engineering for public works support. Jim, you got this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll keep it kind of short for tonight. Um, the additional inlets in Chestnut have been completed. They paved or patched the curb and gutter last week, and they're going to pave today in one of the spots, but it rained, so they aren't doing that at this time. Uh, once it dries out, they will. I think they're over there pumping this afternoon, and then they'll move on to the second spot. The piping in Che- Adelman addition is complete, and they're working on putting in the, replacing the concrete over there too. So, those two projects that have been kind of hanging out there looming for quite a while are, are now in their final, their final phase, so I hope that, um, the residents appreciate that, that work being done in that area. So, I did reach out to the county on some of the erosion and turf establishment on Conroe fourteen and seventeen. Haven't heard anything back yet, but it was just late that I, I did that. I did take a little tour just to see how the, how the rain affected some of that, uh, today. And there were like, there are some washouts around that seventieth on the north side, and then I did take a peek at the turf establishment along, along that, um, Conroe fourteen corridor, so I'll follow up when I know more on that. Uh, preliminary plans for the shared use path out front of here are due to the DOT, um, by January seventh, I want, fourth, January fourth, I think it is, not January, July. So, we'll have some internal meetings with those and the city staff and get that ready to go prior to that date around the fourth of July, so. Uh, the other thing that's, we've been working through is, um, some concerns from the Dreamfields addition in relation to the Rivers Edge addition. So, um, I've been working with a, a resident out there for, well, Breton and I have been for quite some time, just answering questions and, um, kind of providing some additional information to, to them, and there's some concern from that neighborhood when Memory Lane opens up. Um, so, the way that the plan notes are written for the Rivers Edge second edition is that the road is to remain closed to construction traffic until the, um, project is complete, and once the project is complete.
Which one, the Memory Lane one?
The ma- the main one, yeah.
Okay.
Not Seventy-Eighth, which is the one on the west. It's the, it's the one through Memory Lane, the residential street. So, there's some concern there with, um, this, the traffic coming through the Memory Lane area. So, um, I did have a phone conversation with an individual today about some traffic calming measures. And he did send an email to the mayor and administrator myself about a lot of things, so I'm not gonna, um, talk about, go through all of it, but I will make sure that it gets distributed. Um, the one thing to take a note of here is the, um, number one, they would like to see the restriction on Memory Lane be for home construction as well, up to a certain percentage of home construction, so that the trucks and the deliveries would use Seventy-Eighth Street and not Memory Lane. Um, we did talk about how to enforce that, and I don't have a silver bullet for that at this time, but that was one of his, his requests. And the other one would be potentially temporary speed bumps along Memory Lane in the, in the, uh, in the Dreamfields area to, um, make sure that people are, I've maybe trained isn't the right word, but trained to kind of go slow through that area and not just go, go super fast. So, uh, there was a sketch provided. And like I said, I don't expect any action on this tonight. I just had a phone conversation. I said, if you give me some email, I'll brief you guys on it, so that way, when we come back in two weeks, we can have a proper agenda item for it, but I just wanted to get it in, out in, in front of you, you guys. So, just some potential speed bump locations in there, and the city does have, um, some temporary speed bumps from last year when we put them out on Lost River Road, and I believe it was Wild Rose Way, where I think that traffic has calmed down out there since the road has opened up, I, I, I guess, maybe. There hasn't been a request to put them back up out there yet, so I think there is some that the city has for temporary pur- purpose. But, um, that's just one thing that, um, he's calling it a speed control area with a couple sets of, of, um, port of temporary speed bumps out in that part of the world. So, um, I will put together a memo for you for the next meeting, but I just want you to know that there is some conversations between these subdivisions as Rivers Edge moves towards completion, and that potential road closure does come down, that there may be some discussions had about if there's a way to kind of limit the, um, limit the traffic that goes down there as far as construction is concerned, so.
The current construction on that road right now, does it, um, support a certain weight limit?
It was built to a standard local street, so it's really no different than, uh, what's out, what's in a neighborhood right now. Um, so, the difference is the final lift has been placed on that one, so when we build these subdivisions and we don't put the final lift on there, the road gets beat up. We fix it, and then we put the final lift on there. This one has had the final lift, so there's that. Just, it's pavement strength, but if there is an issue, it becomes a patch and not necessarily something that gets patched and related. There isn't pedestrian facilities along that, that stretch. There is curb and gutter. It is an urban section, but there isn't any pedestrian facilities um, in that, in that area, so that's something that maybe could be addressed in the future, um, as a way, if it becomes a problem with, with people walking and that. But, um, yeah. And I don't know if it could be posted to. That's one thing that we did talk about, was potentially posting it as a, a lighter road, so that oversized and over-dimensional would have to get permits and be directed as to their routes.
And that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. So, the final pavement lifts, um, are complete as far as the pavement is concerned. There is some grading that remains out in Maple Lake Estates on that far southwest, southeast corner, and, um, they still have time to do it. We didn't have a real tight deadline on that, but the paving itself, the sidewalk and the curb repairs are, are done. There was some, no parking signs put in at Maple Lake Estates as part of that project, so hopefully that isn't a problem, but, and then, uh, trees were replaced along the badling, but there were some dead trees in there that we, we replaced with a more suitable species for the condition. Found that screws don't really do the best in some of this area, so. And I know what you're talking about, screws, so, um, that. Any other questions on that, or anything?
No questions. No, I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, moving on to number sixteen, Breton, see administrative report.
Okay, just a couple items I have. First one, and I know it's a few weeks out here, but coming up, we talked about fireworks a little bit earlier tonight, but a reminder, fireworks, um, and that'll be, they'll be able to be lit off towards the end of the month here, June twenty-seventh through July sixth. Uh, we'll have some postings reminding people of the time periods when they can and can't be doing that. Um, also, city hall is open on June nineteenth or Juneteenth. Uh, we have had people, or some people call and ask today if we're open or not, and I've been asked by a couple folks, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, yes, we are open on the nineteenth. And the last one I had is boulevard tree planting is expected to be completed this week. Uh, our public work staff, seasonal staff have been very busy getting those trees out when the weather has been favorable, but we've also been trying to keep up on the mowing too. Uh, so, today, obviously, they weren't able to get too much planted, but they're expecting to have it done this week. That's all I had.
Any questions for Breton?
Thank you.
Okay, um, for portfolio reports, um, from the mayor's side, I believe we have interviews coming up for your um, city planner, assistant position. Um, I'm not sure if you've scheduled those yet, um, invited people to North Dakota yet for that. Um, you and I will be working on that. Um, and then from the, uh, the other thing for the mayor portfolio, um, uh, Mayor of West Fargo, Bernard Artis, reached out to invite, uh, the city of Horace to participate in the corporate Pinewood Derby, um, to help sponsor or uh, as a fundraiser for the Boy Scouts of America. That'll be June twenty-sixth. I do plan on trying to enter a car, um, for that event, um, starting at six thirty P M, and donating some money to them. And then hopefully, uh, Microsoft will be matching that money that I donate. Um, other stuff, uh, we did talk about, uh, the interviews. Um, Breton and I did wrap up, um, some of the reviews for some of the employees, uh, the week prior, and, uh, I do have one more just to, uh, to finish up on. And other than that, um, that is what I have going on the next couple of weeks. Naomi, you're up next.
Alright, mine's gonna be pretty short this time. Um, planning and zoning, um, did have a meeting last week where they, um, discussed, um, mixed-use zoning districts amendments. Did you guys end up making a motion on the height restriction? I believe you did, right? So, they are, they did lower the height restriction for the buildings in the miss, in the mixed-use, um, districts. Um, and then, you know.
To two stories or to how many?
Can you?
Two, two stories, thirty-five feet.
Thank you.
That'll be, um, this week until the end of July seventh.
Um, and then also, you know, they talked, those long-range planning discussions. It would be super beneficial for council members to listen to those meetings because there's gonna be a lot of discussion at those meetings, um, regarding the long-range planning, future land use map, and i- in order to understand where the commissioners are coming from and their thought process and how they arrived at a certain decision, um, before it comes to us, is gonna be really valuable for you. So, I do recommend that you go ahead and listen to those meetings. They are gonna be on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Um, and they're on the website, and if you have questions, you can always give me a call too, but um, clearly, we don't want to have a quorum, so I don't really want, um, a bunch of council, or council members showing up to the meeting. But, um, you know, the discussions are gonna be pretty in-depth, and we're gonna have a lot of hard discussions coming up as a council, so, um, I just kind of want, want you guys to be prepared for that. Um, otherwise, I think that was all I had.
Alright, moving on to Stephanie.
Um, I don't have much. I do agree, Naomi. Thanks for the reminder. I do usually always listen to the planning and zoning meetings. Um, and we probably don't say it enough, but I, I really appreciate all the work that planning and zoning does. You guys put in a lot of work. Um, and it is, uh, noticed, so that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, Rachel.
I'm so sorry. I don't mean to jump out of line, but I did forget to mention one thing with the height restriction. Um, there is a way for developers, I just, I had Kelly looking at me, so, um, there is a way for developers to be able to um, get your desired, if you wanted to go higher for, you know, stories, there is a way to go about that um, with the P U D or some sort of, um, a request with, with those kinds of things to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, it's not like your hand, developers' hands aren't gonna be fully tied, but, um, I, I guess, the whole point of the, the restriction is because we're, the, what we wanted was to look at the area of a mixed-use. A lot of developers are looking at it as a building of mixed-use, and therefore it's, it's just not ki- it's kind of not what the vision was for mixed-use, so. I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Mr. Mayor. I did not mean to do that, but I wanted to put that in there.
No, that's helpful.
Here, Rachel, what do you got?
Um, just a couple things. So, tomorrow, the parks are doing a party in the park at Meadowlark Park, um, from five to seven. I think there's a lot of cool things planned for it. Um, so, um, I don't know, Paul, do you wanna?
Yeah, uh, they're having a free hot-dog, chips, beverages, uh, and a glass of glass tea, from thirty, four sixty-seven. Uh, Yarick, you can play a little bit, or spend a.
Yeah. Awesome, and then we are meeting next week about, uh, Bean Days, so we are actively working on that and excited about it, and, um, and that's all I have.
Okay, when do I expect the schedule for Bean Days to be out?
Oh, yeah, this week?
Should say.
Okay.
Alright, with that, any other further comments or questions?
No.
Okay, and, uh, how I will look for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I got a second?
I guess I'll have to.
Someone has a second.
I'll second.
That's the first time I have not made a motion.
Alright, I got a motion, a second. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
And we are done.
Aye. I know, I'm sorry. I'm pretty tired today.